Welcome to the village board work session. Today is Monday, July 10. As is always the case, we begin our work session at seven and we'll be in our regular meeting at eight. So just a couple of things to report. The prime item on our work session agenda is to continue the discussion about the moratorium. A few things to report. I visited the planning commission and spent quite a bit of time talking to them. There were only four members there. Three were not, so it was not a full group. But I can report a few things that were discussed. Then we also followed up on a couple of questions that had arisen about the 444 Bedford Road project. The proposed project here at the bank. And so, so the issue there is that 444 Bedford currently proposes to build 36 residential units. Twenty-nine of them would be in the newly constructed areas and seven would be in the existing five-story building. The total proposed floor area is 48,075 square feet, which includes the existing 15,940 square feet. They're unveiling themselves of the design guidelines bonus, which increases their FAR by 15% to an allowable 2.3. That's what gives them 48,516 square feet in allowable area. And they're using all but 400 and some square feet of it. So if we were to eliminate all FAR bonuses, as well as the land area per unit requirement, which is one of the things that have been included in the BFJ memo as among the steps one could take. That would mean their development is subject to an FAR of two instead of 2.3. Total allowable square footage would then be 42,188. In other words, 26,248 in potential new construction compared with 32,135 in the current proposal likely means that that would certainly mean the developer had to reduce the overall square footage by 5,887 square feet. So the question is, what does that do to the total number of units? There are currently 29 units proposed in the newly developed spaces. They range from 515 square feet for one bedroom to 1093 for two at an average of about 785 per apartment. So just based on the average unit size, reducing, eliminating the FAR bonus would decrease the number of potential units by about seven. Not clear how they would choose to do that if they were required to. But that is, is the lay of the land, so.
Is this what percentage, 12%?
Well, they currently are proposing 36 units. If they lost seven, it's about give or take 20%.
That's significant.
They might, they might even lose eight, it's hard to say.
In, in the BFJ memo, it was six units lost. So there, is that a revised calculation that?
So Susan went back and looked at it with greater care. And the question that we don't know is how a developer would propose to manage that.
Right.
And it could be that they would make units smaller and keep, keep a higher number. It could mean that they would make some units bigger, in which case the, the loss would be even greater or equal, so.
And then did I read the, did I read the memo correctly? In that the recommendation was purely based on giving us the ability to reduce the number of units allowable by implementing these FAR bonuses, so there wasn't another rationale for it?
There, I don't think is another rationale and reckon, they're not recommending this. They're just offering options that would be available if it was our goal to reduce the number of units.
That's fine.
So that's the, the lay of the land layer. And just, just to recap, and you guys will pipe up if you think I have any of this wrong. I think we're unanimously of the view that we will let the moratorium expire at the end of the month as opposed to renewing it. And the question before us is whether as we do that, we wish to establish any change in zoning that would affect 444. We're quite confident at this point that 444 is the only project that is in the pipeline at the moment in a way that would be immediately allowed to go forward. And if we wanted, based on all of these analyses to reduce it, we would need to be proposing a zoning change at the, at the time that we, that we allow the moratorium to expire. The other two pieces which we all agreed to, to pursue in the coming weeks and months were, were Michael's view shed idea in the vicinity of the proposed space. Your concern about looking further into the implications of affordable housing and whether there's a way to enhance the number of affordable units we get. And obviously need to dig into that because in just a flat out increase the required affordable perhaps reduces whole development. And again, you, you could make that argument as well. So let me pivot to, to the conversations with the planning commission and they're going to have a further conversation. I think we're going to get something back from them after, after their next meeting. Jim McDonald on the planning commission has some fairly strong feelings about some zoning changes. And they are not necessarily about increasing or decreasing the, the potential development. But I think in many cases, increasing their control as the ARB over how some of these things look and how things like exterior infrastructure are managed. So some of that has to do with roof level mechanicals that people are concerned about. I will also say that one of, and we just thought that's just an hour ago, I'll forward it to everybody. One of the things that Jim was interested in was the idea that our zoning code potentially require all habitable spaces to have, that is, living rooms and bedrooms have direct access, access to daylight. Robert to advise if this or could be a zoning code item versus a building code item. The building code is up to the state building code. That arose in part because of concerns that there are some units in the proposed 444 project where the apartment meets the building code, the New York State Building Code, but does not have a window in both the bedroom and the living room. So, you know, an interesting question about that, since that's purely the decision of a developer, an owner, a landlord and a renter, is, is whether that ought to be a matter that we address in some way. And it isn't clear whether we have the right to or not. But I think two things we said about that. One is that was a concern on the part of the planning commission in general way. And they mentioned it to the applicant when they were back there. And I will also say that I think another piece of that, at least in Jim's case, and he can speak to himself if, if we need more clarity, is the idea that not allowing a living room or bedroom to be built without a, without a window has an effect on density.
So, so is it true that in the New York State code, that bedrooms have to have windows?
I believe that is true.
That's what I thought previously.
So bedroom soup and living rooms down.
Yeah, I believe that is the case. I mean, there's certainly plenty of New York City apartments that are relevant apartments with hopefully windows at one end. So part of that question is whether, you know, in Jim's case, I think A, he views it as appropriate planning and humane living, but I also think he, he views it as a piece of control that affects how people lay buildings out and that that may have an appearance on how it looks.
Yes, it's also, I think not having a window in a bedroom is also a fire safety issue, right?
You said very. Yeah, except fire safety is entirely the state, the state building code. We, we do not have our own fire or building code. And it may very well be that we are not entitled, and I don't say this with any certainty, to add to our code something over and above what the New York State Building Code requires. And i- if we are entitled to do that, then the next question would be, what is the basis for us to do this when folks that manage the statewide codes for a living have, have not required? So a couple of these other things that he mentioned, which I, I think are indirectly related to the issue that is at hand about the moratorium. Existing non-conforming conditions should not be increased for any reason. For example, an increase in bulk through the addition of shaftways for mechanical electrical plumbing production, egress stairs, outdoor mechanical equipment and the like. Some of that arises from the possibility that it may be that an outdoor, that the addition of a fire stair tower does not count in the FAR. I think that was where he was headed on that. Again, I think it's a legitimate thing to dig into, but a fairly small market matter as a part, as far as the overall impact. All exterior infrastructure to be screened and approved by the ARB. He, he wants, for example, roof mounted infrastructure to be setback from the building at a minimum of 10 feet or 45 degrees from the exterior. In submission to the ARB, must include a line of sight study from the perspective of person, street level, opposite sidewalk, as well as relevant street in intersections. Would like the ARB to enforce a further setback requirement if deemed necessary. So again, that one issue attached to that is that in today's world where HVAC units for multifamily units are, are by and large all individual packages on the roof.
Right.
Not, not the way it was done a generation ago. In many cases, the detailing of all of that has not been done at the time that a building permit is filed, in part because a lot of steps have to take place before it's crystal clear how the, the mechanical engineers are going to work out their stuff. You end up with situations where whatever, the same sign product wasn't available and you're going with somebody else and you know, all that sort of stuff.
Well, at 70, has he either agreed to or figured out a way to, to close the envelope a little bit with the exposed A duct units, whatever? He's before the ARB right now, that would have been the conversation.
I can tell you that these issues are not new. When the Ashburn Hall Senior Center was built, there was great concern over the duct work there. And when the Burns was built, the planning commission had concerns and about the mechanicals on the roof of that building. And if you look up there, there's some mesh screening that was added up there. I, I will say it's interesting if you take a look in places like Brooklyn. I, I was coming off Tillery Street, off Flatbush Avenue a couple of months ago. There's a very tall building there and literally hundreds of these units stacked around because they had so many apartments and they all need airspace and all of that. So understandable concern. And I guess one piece of that is that the need, if we were to enforce further setbacks on all of that and potentially a further setback for the upper floors of a, of a lotline property. He says for zero lotline properties and minimal setback properties 10 feet or less, planning commission may consider the effect of the streetscape and might require setbacks to be increased in the interest of the adjacent property owners or the community.
This is still with respect to the roof?
This is respect, no, this is respect to the building. Furthermore, when considering the effect on the streetscape, the planning commission might like to require the top level occupied level of the structure to be set back from the street. As setbacks could be used for outdoor terraces or be integrated into a pitch roof design. So again, essentially what that potentially would say is you come up with a potential square footage you're allowed to have and a maximum height you're allowed to have. But based on the design, the planning commission might say you can't have that, which is both a thoroughly understandable goal on their part and a thoroughly problematic piece of, of uncertainty for a potential property owner. He says for parking lots and garages layouts must allow for safe turnaround. I, I think that is, I don't know where, where that's coming from. Whether there was any concern about that, I'm not aware of or having had a circumstance where a parking garage didn't allow a safe turnaround of vehicles in in the served area. And that's a matter the planning commission addresses now and has professional help in looking at too, so. Then lastly, and again, not specific to the, to the moratorium issue. He says it's the recommendation that, his recommendation that the planning board and the ARB have jurisdiction over all development along our major arteries. For example, on Manville Road, commercial properties can be reviewed, but not residential and multifamily. So I think his recommendation is he would, he would require anything on major arteries, which I assume would be Washington, Bedford, Manville, Marble, at least. Possibly Platteville Road to, down to the border, to, to require planning and ARB approval. And that, as you might imagine, I was on the planning commission years ago and years before that on the ARB. And the only residential properties that are required to go to the ARB at the moment are those in the historic overlay district. And I can tell you that most of the owners of those houses generally want to do the right thing and they're not trying to do anything crazy. And for many of them feels unreasonable that government requires them to come and sit before a group of five or seven people and get them to kibits on what color they want to paint their house. And the idea that if you wanted to build an addition on your house or change a porch or paint a different color in all of those locations and had to pony up a permit fee and an espro and come before the planning commission ARB would be viewed darkly by some, some residents. Although you can understand why that would be a goal of, of planning and ARB. Partly a question of, of the balance, which is, is never certain between the community's interest in how things look and the community's idea about how things look. And an individual property owner is right to do what they want with their stuff. Any thoughts on any of that so far?
A lot to digest though.
Yeah. Just off the cuff, that last recommendation seems possibly a bit much to require the community, but you know, all of this, I feel like we would need to hear a longer version of them.
Yeah. So and, and mind you, this was, this was Jim. He, he had the strongest view about this, I think. And, and what he's come back with is, is mostly about the form of things and not so directly related to the scale or density of them. One, one commissioner suggested that we increase the parking requirements per unit. I think largely as a means of making it harder to build them. So that's from my standpoint. Understand that would work, but it, it flies in the face of, of any planning advice we have gotten where the number of cars per units are probably even at the moment greater than they need to be. And certainly that's the anecdotal evidence we've had so far. 39 Washington has been occupied for a good long while now. The DePew project is, is nearly fully occupied. The seven affordable units have not been leased yet, that's still in the works. But there's every evidence so far that the amount of parking our code requires for apartments is just fine.
Yeah, I mean, that's just asking developers to spend more money in order to potentially put more cars on the road.
Well, and I, I mean, honestly, I think, I think what it part, part of the idea there is you couldn't achieve as many apartments because it would mean too much parking.
Right.
It'd increase the rental rates too.
Yeah, yeah, it does.
So Peter, my, my initial response to everything that you just read from Jim is that if we take all of that into consideration, we're not finishing this tonight. This moratorium discussion, because there were a lot of.
And, and he's going to get back, the planning commission is going to get back for your commentary apparently this week.
Not that we need to finish it tonight, but there were several proposals we haven't discussed at all. Especially the one that jumped out to me is upper story setbacks, which I personally do think looked great and, and ameliorate some of that feeling of surrounded by buildings. Well, so, and so I would, if that's coming from planning, the planning commission, I, I for one would like to discuss that as a potential option. It also introduces green space into the vertical space of our community, not just on the ground, right? Where you have, you have an upper story setback and then you have plantings or you, you know, out, outdoor, it has a nice look. I mean, it's certainly happening all over Europe.
I mean, it, it can, it can produce a very, very nice result. Recognize that in almost all the downtown, except the one block, we have a three-story max.
Right.
If you require a setback on the third floor with a terrace, that reduces the habitable area. It perhaps doesn't reduce the total rental value because you could charge a lot of money for the apartment at the top with the, with the terrace. So it certainly wouldn't. The interesting question there is in the circumstance of the, of the block where you lot four stories, that strikes me as a, as a more reasonable argument in the, in the four-story zone.
Yeah.
And difficult in the three-story zone, in part because you look at a project like 39 Washington, which by political standards was a pretty big site, big enough to the capacity to build onsite parking and all of that. Happens that Washington is our widest street. I certainly personally, speaking for myself, don't find that building to be too tall.
Right.
And in the case of 444 Bedford, what they're proposing to build is next to a five-story building.
Right.
Right. So it's an interesting question whether the overall design goals that we might have would be encouraged by such a required setback because it would force architects to try to figure out how to do it.
So this is one person's feedback.
One person.
And the board is going to consider all of this and get back to us with their joint.
That, that is what I hope and expect. They're meeting again this week. And as I mentioned, three members were not there and so I didn't get it kind of the members who were there were Jim, David Keller, Eric Bretherton and Russ Klein. So Henry Leva, Adely Sutoff and Phil Myrick were not there and waiting for their commentary.
So the moratorium comes to a close or would come to a close if we don't renew it at the end of this month.
That is right.
So so we have this meeting and next meeting.
Yeah. And let me also say that, that I think it's fair to say that the, the only project that would be released and be back before planning is 444.
Yeah.
Let me also say that we could change the zoning while at, at any point along their process until the point at which they have a building permit. But that's not a fair thing to do.
Right, right, right.
We want to give those guys an understanding of what, what they're entitled to do so they don't spin their wheels spending time and money on something that, that ultimately won't be achieved.
Right. So I, I'll say one of the things that has struck me listening to these different proposals is that I feel like it's important, well, a couple of things. One is that when you tweak one piece, it often affects other pieces that we're talking about, right? So it's never a discreet thing. So you know, sort of reducing density may increase the cost of individual apartments, for instance. And you know, so there's always like that kind of, so I think any change that we make, we need to consider all of the potential repercussions. And the other thing is that to just to take the example of the windows, for instance. I don't know if that would have an effect on density or not, but to me, that's a, a recommendation that has you know, a, a kind of end goal that is not just about reducing density. You know, I mean, it's, it's about sort of having an overall conception of like, what kind of housing do we want to promote? And for me personally, like I have reservations about, and that's why I'm not entirely sure and I missed the last meeting, how I feel about these possible changes to the FER, FER incentives. I have reservations about making changes that feel like they're just made to sort of discourage development without any kind of sort of bigger vision of what kind of development we would like to see, if that makes sense. So that's where I have some reservations with respect to that, but some things in general, whereas on the, whereas, you know, just, you know, all these things have to be thought through, but for instance, the setbacks on a four-story building or the window things are things where I can see, okay, they're regaining a kind of vision of the kind of development we would like to see. And it might also have some other implications as well.
I mean, the the there are so many aspects of the evolution of a community that we don't control. One of them is when people decide to do what they're going to do. And we've certainly seen it lately, in part, you know, all these things have been triggered at once. 444 kind of triggered by the departure of Chase. 39 Washington triggered by Warren Schlot's need to sell all of his properties and move into retirement. The DePew project by the departure of Laduka and, and that property coming up on the market. Seventy Memorial, obviously one that we gave a kickstart to with zoning change. But that being a circumstance where we have a, a, a long-term moribund property. Unrelated to the downtown moratorium, we've got similar circumstance. Bank of New York departs its facility up in Foxwood. What's going to happen next? None of these things are things that we encouraged, except, except the Seventy Memorial. And yet they all happened very quickly and that caused a bunch of people, Jonathan among them, to say too much too fast. Right? So the issue there is that our capacity to control that is not a valve that we can turn on and off.
Right.
We, we, and further, the proposals that people come forward with are, are, you know, subject to their own vision of what they want to do and their own architect, their own desire. I mean, you may have the same experience I have with quite a few people who think that Seventy Memorial, certainly at the Memorial Plaza side, looks fantastic. And quite a few people who think it's simply awful, right? So that's in the eye of the beholder. And I think the same thing prevails over various other projects, certainly has prevailed about 39, about DePew, and that's in play about the project that is proposed at 444. So I think part of what Jim is heading towards is maybe not so much about scale of development, although certainly the setbacks get into that. But the idea that the ARB would like to have more control about telling people how things have to look.
Right, right.
Which is a slippery slope.
I agree.
Yeah, it sounds more like a planned suburban planned community ethos, right? Where you have designated paint colors on your chair for these certain ones and everything in your house to go to your HOA if you want it.
I mean, there was an interesting
It doesn't sound like our town from that point.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I got this today.
The person that you just described, the ARB actually does it more. Because I've wanted it completely, it's been absorbed by the planning commission, right?
The planning commission functions as a.
Board anymore. So what do they do? What's their power? You know, what, I, I think, I'm not just asking for myself, I think there's general confusion in the community when you got it before and when you don't, when they can exercise their control, when they can.
So the ARB.
I'm not wanting one explanation.
Right, I'm happy to give you a quick explanation. The planning commission is a, an entity required by state law. And in our case, it has seven members and they have certain legal requirements. And they ha- have certain legal requirements. Uh to go through planning review and comprehensive plans and secret and all of that. The A R B is not something we have to have, it's a creature of local creation, which is true in many communities. Used to be a separate five person board. I served on that board, that was my first gig in in the government. Uh but we had an increasing amount of difficulty populating that and great difficulty. Keeping even one architect on it, uh because many local architects. Feel like they they. Well, they feel like they come before the A R B and they can't be in the position of being on it because that kills their their local business. Ultimately, we folded it in the A R B, they're now seven members as a re- into the planning commission, they have seven members instead of five and. On that board are are uh uh two licensed practicing architects. And I think Russ Klein is 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 a trained architect, I don't know if he's licensed at this point, I'm not sure. Certainly with a lot of architectural knowledge. So um now for the, we haven't had licensed architects on the A R B. Uh two licensed architects for a long time. I, in my day job, been before the A R B in Dobbs Ferry. Uh a number of times on behalf of clients for sign programs and and every one of them were architects. Uh so that comes with its advantages and its disadvantages. But in the end, what some folks say, and certainly we're in November sixteenth, is. You know, I don't like the way these things look, I want things to look X, you know, why aren't they brick? Why don't they look colonial? Why don't they look? Unique.
That right.
There's also been some commentary from some folks about quality of building materials. You need to legislate that people can't use ersatz materials, you know, you gotta use real brick instead of veneer brick, you know. No hardy board, no vinyl, you know, all these various elements. Um and all of those things, of course, drive up the cost of construction. In ways that make it hard for individuals, and I I can tell you way, way back seeing an A R B. Um a long time ago, you know, you had folks coming before you who. Were were wishing to do something that really like was the fulfillment of a dream of theirs. Or on the edge of being able to do it financially and having to come before five people who are potentially gonna say, eh, you know, like that, try again, doesn't feel so good. Right, then so that that um is the age old struggle between the rights of government and the rights of the community. So.
So so, okay, I I don't mean to disrupt your guys.
Feel free.
Can I ask you? Uh I I you guys know where I stand, you said perfectly, too fast, too much too fast.
Okay.
I'm not into development, I I'm I'm good with that. You've heard from the community, we might argue whether it's a minority, whether it is a broad stroke of the community. But you've heard, you've heard from the community that similar sentiments um. Uh I I guess, I guess what I'm looking for you guys, and again, it may be helpful, is uh. What is your view on? What is your view on development in this village? Are you happy with the way it is? If so, you don't need to do anything, like the moratorium season, you know, would you be happy if the day after you did the moratorium? You found out that the diner and the Jiffy Loop sold and there's gonna be another four story building up there? Would that make you feel good? Would you be yucky, yah yah? Well, what is your guys' individual feeling about development? Because while the moratorium can expire at the end of this month. Sounds like there's still a lot of input that you gotta get, twenty days, not a lot of time to sort of process it all. You could extend it um if indeed the sentiment on the board was. Yeah, uh we'd like to see it slow down too, if that's not prevailing sentiment, then you can let the moratorium expire. But I'm just curious what your individual thoughts are.
I mean, the the issue of too much too fast. I I I might agree with you that a whole lot has happened uh very quickly. Uh but the question is, ought we get to decide that, right? So for example. Uh. It would be just fine with me if Chase Manhattan were still in that bank and the Baldotti family still had a going concern. And they weren't motivated to change anything as they haven't been for all these many years. That would be just fine with me. Cool out, take some time. I don't, however, think it's government's right to say. Because we're concerned about the speed of things, we're gonna tell you. That you need to maintain the status quo, even though your environmental conditions have changed through no fault of your own, right? So so what I would say is. Um. I am of the view that our zoning code and our comprehensive plan and our updated twenty seventeen. Was thoughtful and right minded, uh and I am. Uh optimistic that the things it has wrought so far will ultimately be beneficial to the village. I am mindful of the fact that in some cases. It has allowed the rehabilitation of properties that were just a five star mess, a a brownfield, a certified brownfield. Right next to our village and the gateway at Grant Street is now an apartment building, like it or not. It is a significant ecological improvement, a significant benefit to the community from a tax base standpoint. And a whole bunch of people, I've talked to a couple of them, who are really just glad to be here, including some aging parents of. Of young people who live in the village. You look at seventy memorial, whatever people's thoughts are. The pieces are coming together in ways that I think make clear that the. Broad scope master plan for Memorial Plaza, Cooley Street, that whole zone is starting to bear fruit in ways that will benefit generations to come. After some generations of stasis. So what I mean to say about that is, the fact that it all happened at once is not our doing. We changed the zoning. Uh on Marvel Avenue twenty years ago and. Some of it has borne fruit and some hasn't, just because properties haven't come up and been redeveloped and da 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 da. Um things are gonna change. We are in a circumstance here where I think it 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 having gone through the review. When you say too much too fast, correct me if I'm wrong, it's kind of like. It feels like like change and I want to wait and see how it feels, as opposed to any. Any, you know, we've gone through a thorough effort with the F J, you say, okay, well, what are the issues? Is it schools? Is it fire? Is it water? Is it, you know, da 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 da? And I think it's 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 pretty incontrovertibly true at this point that it isn't any of those things. What it is, and I don't mean to diminish the significance of it, is how it feels, right? How fast can we all collectively or individually process change?
Um I think what John's saying is.
Just just to say that, and the sort of only pushback to that is that. Once it go, once it goes to your point, once you. Uh you know, let the zoning stand, there are, it will. Things can happen that we can't change. I mean, so we have to live with whatever happens um. And so that's 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 good or bad, that's that's where we're gonna end up, so.
But but.
I mean, and so the the idea of, you know, and again, the the reducing the. The bonus, eliminating the bonus uh and and reducing M V R, does that squash four forty four? I I I don't know, I I don't know, it's it's it makes it less um. So you know, that seems to be.
I mean, and just to be candid about it, look, that I mean, one of the.
I don't think picking on four forty four is actually the right thing. There 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 are projects we look at, do an analysis on it and say what happened for. It will affect every one of the other properties that might be up for development as well.
Okay, but we've looked, as you know, at at so called soft sites that we could imagine are big enough to to support some development. And um it's hard to do, it's hard to make it work. You know, you have to assemble quite a bit of property, that would happen, but it's it's not easy to do. Um I mean, why I focus on four forty four is that is the project that would be released from its current stasis.
Right, I understand.
By the uh uh end of the moratorium. These other various thoughts, the idea of setbacks, da 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 da. Are matters that we can easily explore and implement if we choose to. Uh in the coming weeks and months with with very low risk.
And and I don't disagree with that, I will only say, you know, as well as I do from a practice standpoint. The moratorium, one of the benefits of the moratorium is it puts pressure on the board to keep this front and center focused. You know, my guess is you let the moratorium lapse. I like, you know, Michael's idea of Ushed, David and Nicole's idea of more affordable housing. You know, other crises in the middle ages are gonna take set in front or are gonna are gonna necessarily potentially reduce. It 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 all gets back burner, I've seen, you know, I sat on the board for twelve years, I saw it, I've seen it happen. Um not that it will this time, maybe maybe you guys will persevere, but um. Uh but the benefit of the moratorium is it does keep the test, the focus on the issue um with a deadline.
But I can certainly not promise you how I would feel about any of these specific issues once we have all the information. But I can promise you, after the ceremony that we're excited for and after our uh meeting, we'll return to work session. We're gonna talk about um uh something that was three years ago, which was, you know, looking at. People who in the village who um. Get uh preschool lunches uh because their income level. And we made it possible for them to go to summer camp and now fourteen families send kids to our summer camp for free. And we tried to to do that on a limited basis for Panther Club to give those parents the ability to work a full day. Um and because of the way Panther Club worked out last summer, it didn't really happen. But I haven't forgotten about it and we're gonna talk about it tonight, about how to implement that better. So when things are important, they don't get lost, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's true and I I don't think we really have time for that right now, but earlier you asked for us. To kind of give our own vision and I I personally would be happy to do that um. And uh I don't know, I I feel like a lot of good things have come out of the moratorium actually, and it does feel like. Um in some ways a beginning rather than an end of a process.
What what do you mean?
Well, because I mean, so what I mean is it it's generated a lot of ideas, so like the 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 initial motivation was the sense of like. Is too much happening too quickly and more specifically, the reason for the moratorium was to. Look at the impact on infrastructure and emergency services and things like that, and obviously we've done that. Um but to me, it always felt like it was also an opportunity to consider. Kind of the broader vision that we had again and to look at. You know, for for instance, the issue of affordability and all kinds of other things that come up around development, so. From my perspective, I feel like we're gonna continue, you know, whether we end it now or whatever, we will continue to to talk about those things. Um and and it's and it's complex, I think like we also don't want to make hasty decisions, you know. Out of some sort of political motivation without looking at the 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 repercussions um anyway.
I I can also agree that. For me. I I don't feel like this issue has yet been filled as to what we could do. So although I do think the moratorium should come to an end, I don't feel like this is going to get put in the back burner. Cause I feel like I myself want to have some resolution as to something happening to to being able to utilize all the data we've been able to receive. And to me, this is one of the front, you know, front issues that I'm very involved in. That I'm really interested to to get some kind of resolution on it. So I don't think that, for me personally, I need the moratorium to continue. To have that be forefront and to have that be in my attention, because I do think that, you know, buildings are gonna come up again and and. This issue, people aren't gonna forget about this issue, and so I do think that. To our constituents, we owe that to to, you know, utilize what we've gotten from all the studies and all the data we've received and. And be able to make a decision, whether it's we make a change and and support why we made those changes. Or don't make a change and support why we're choosing to leave it as is. So and I do think that. I'm I'm happy that the moratorium gave us all this information to make a proper decision. So I I do agree you're concerning that there's always stuff going on, there's always things going on in the village, but. I do think at least, you know, I want to speak for my board, but I do think that. This isn't something that I'm gonna put in the back burner at any point.
My daughter's friends, by the way, want it to be said that they think that seventy Memorial Plaza and the new walkway look cool. Just bringing that out there.
The new walkway looks very cool, I agree.
It's the incoming eighth graders.
Well, I mean, it's it's that's, you know, I appreciate you guys' feedback, I do, um. You know, I'm not for that uh uh taking steps like. Eliminating the bonus F A R is necessarily an irresponsible act, it's got.
I don't think it is an irresponsible act, it's decidedly unethical.
That will cause, you know, uh I mean, you know, the key is in the word bonus um, so uh you you know. It it some, you know, look, anything that you guys can come up with in the next two weeks. Which is a tall order, uh I know.
Oh, it's it's not.
To 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 to. I I don't, I I to slow things down a little bit, even if it's on the margin um. Even if it's five units or seven units at four forty four, and I'm not picking on those guys, maybe it's, you know, um. You know, uh the 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 development that's gonna happen eventually on Washington Avenue, maybe it reduces those units by ten or something like that. It, you know, I and I don't know the numbers, I'm just throwing them out um.
Right.
It has it has some impact uh.
One of the options on the table is to say. Instead of having a bonus for meeting these design guidelines, we can make these design guidelines mandatory with no bonus, they're just part of the deal.
Okay.
That's one of the things.
Yeah, I I don't think we've worked that through, sorry, go ahead.
Well, just you brought up Washington, you know, Jonathan, one of the things that set my mind at ease was the presentation about the difficulty of parking. These soft sites, right? So I that, to me, that was the biggest revelation.
Yeah.
Of the report, uh because the. To my mind, there are two or three of the soft sites that I thought for sure these are going to be apartments as soon as possible. And when it was presented, I assume, and when we had follow up questions with her about the difficulty of structured parking with our requirements. Were difficulty slash impossibility, really, in in some of them, I. I I, you know, I started to feel like, okay, that's not gonna happen tomorrow, the 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 build out analysis. Might eventually happen, but um. But yeah, those kind of medium sized sites that I was worried about, e- even with an assemblage. I don't know, I'm less, I'm less concerned that we're gonna wake up in ten years with all of those built out apartments.
Yeah, my 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 only response to that is, I I I get it, um I understand that. Except to say that the two biggest developments in the village right now overcame.
Yeah.
Real parking, I mean, you would never think that parking could have been solved at seventy memorial.
Right.
You would never thought that.
To the contrary, that's why we did change the zoning specifically to make it possible.
Right.
No parking.
Yes, parking specifically.
We added another floor because the economic analysis, working with B F J and their economist, was. What would be necessary in order to make it possible economically to build the necessary parking? He built more than he needed.
Okay.
But that's why we changed the zoning.
I I I get it, and 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 the the assemblage of properties down on Depew, um you know, again, they they were able to put together. A couple of buildings. I don't necessarily disagree with, it's very difficult, but I think that uh.
I mean, I I I have this.
I'm not, I'm not as convinced it won't happen again, that's all.
I have this little, you know, piece of in my own history, I was on the planning commission at the time that the. Uh the zoning uh was proposed to be changed in the downtown, which was changed in Nona Zera. And at the time, Joanne Meter, who was our planning consultant from F P Clark, was added, asked to do a theoretical theoretical build out based on the new zone. And she came up with a theoretical build out that essentially assumed if a if the entire village were leveled. And and the every part of it were built out to the maximums, I forget what it was, it was thousands of units, and that was a horrifying number. Uh uh obviously, it wasn't realistic. The thing passed and in twenty years. I think the number of units built with the new, more flexible, more housing friendly zoning was zero in twenty years. So in twenty seventeen, we tweaked that again, and now the question is, did we tweak it too far? So, all right, it's eight oh three, I thank you for your thought.
Thank you. We have a promotion.
We do. Well, it's not a promotion, a a new.
So.
They dress up like this for us every two weeks.
Gressner, where is that uh uh? Lobson is on on his.
E V L S?
Very, it's very uh official.
Good work. Thank you. All right. Are we ready? All right, good week, good evening and welcome to the uh Board of Trustees Meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, July ten. As is always the case, uh we welcome you to visit us. Uh live here at Haiti Wheeler Avenue, uh but also if you are so inclined, you can sign on. Uh to our Zoom webinar of this meeting, as well as meetings of other boards and commissions, you can get the link for that at Pleasantville dash N Y dot gov. And within a few days, uh the video of this meeting. Uh will be available on an on demand webcast, just like all our old meetings, at P C T V seventy six dot org. Uh our uh next regular meeting is two weeks from today, Monday, July twenty four. Work session at seven. Work session at seven, regular meeting at eight. First event tonight is uh one of those happy occasions that we uh have seen relatively frequently with uh the changes and improvements and retirements that we've seen in the Pleasantville Police Department. I invite Chief Eric Gressner uh to introduce tonight's ceremony.
Good evening, Mayor Shear, Village Trustees, Village Administrator Morrissey, members, family and friends of the Pleasantville Police Department and the Pleasantville community. Tonight, I am once again in front of the Village Board with the opportunity to recommend a new officer to join our ranks. The process for selecting a new officer is consistent, but never the same. While each process requires certain steps to be taken and certain boxes to be checked, every member of this department their own unique path to get here. We constantly review our practices and procedures for choosing candidates to ensure we are hiring men and women who represent the best values of the department, of our profession, and of our community. I'm excited for the opportunity to explain why we believe strongly that Gabriel Salome meets or exceeds those criterias and why we are proud to have you here tonight. After graduating from the University of Albany with a degree in economics, Officer Salome was hired and spent two years in a larger municipal police department. During his time there, he was known to be conscientious and fair, serving the public with distinction. His supervisors remarked on his calm demeanor and his desire to proactively work with members of the community to find solutions. He was recommended to us by one of our current officers, which we always consider a critical fact, because the best way to know what it's like to work with someone is to have worked with them before. In addition to his coworkers, our background investigators had the opportunity to speak with a number of the members of Gabriel's platoon from his time serving in the Army National Guard. During his six years of service, Gabriel participated in multinational exercises and trained officers in the critical skills they would need to advance their careers. Gabriel was highly regarded by his fellow soldiers. Many stated he was trustworthy and diligent in everything he did. One of the people with whom he served said that Gabriel was the go to member of his platoon. Gabriel was served the Army Achievement Medal for the outstanding quality of the performance of his duties during his time of service. Hiring and retaining personnel is one of the great responsibilities of Lieutenant Wolman, Lieutenant Gil Martin and I have as the administrators of this department. We know that the decisions we make today will impact the department for years to come, far beyond our time here. We continue to make it our first priority to leave behind a legacy of quality hires who will serve the residents of this community with distinction. I have great confidence that Officer Gabriel Salome represents the continuity of that tradition. As always, I would like to thank the Village Board for their continued support of the men and women of the Police Department. Thank you to our Village Administrator Eric Morrissey for her ongoing assistance in everything we do. And last, but certainly not least, our Deputy Village Clerk Alyssa Hoxton, about whom I cannot say enough good things. You are the engine that makes everything go.
So just mayor, if you if you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Lieutenant Gil Martin, Lieutenant Wolman, and to all the members of the Police Department that have been able to be here tonight. I Gabriel Salome, a welcome to the Village of Pleasantville. Please join me for the square against ceremony. If you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I Gabriel Salome.
Hi, Gabriel Salome.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Code of the Village of Pleasantville.
And the Code of the Village of Pleasantville.
And that I will perform the duties of police officer
And I will play the police officer.
to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, sir. Welcome to Pleasantville, New York. Which of those two or both like to take the opportunity to poke him in the chest with a new badge that says Pleasantville? Looks good. Thank you so much. Thank you for joining us. You've come with an extraordinary background, great experience, and uh the strong endorsement of the leadership of this department, uh, which has been proven to be wise. I appreciate having you as part of our team.
Thank you.
All right. Have a chance to shake hands to the other board members.
Nicole, pleasure to meet you.
David, congratulations.
Thank you.
So we have a few announcements, but we'll skip them for the moment and go immediately to Resolution two fifty one. Paul.
Resolved of the Board of Trustees. Based upon the recommendations of the Police Chief of Police, here appoints Gabriel Salome to Police Officer. Job title code zero, one, three, four, Police Officer Four, at a salary of eighty one thousand two hundred and eighty one, effective July eleventh, two thousand twenty three. Set appointment is subject to a probationary period of a minimum of fifty two weeks.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome, Gabriel Salome. You join a great team, great leadership in a great village. All right, you should all feel free to leave. You're delighted. We're delighted to have you if you want to listen to our dry as dust uh proceedings. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for walking through.
All right, so having uh that happy occasion, uh behind us, let me just go back and uh make a few announcements. Uh, the first is, as I think uh lots of people know, uh, yesterday, Saturday, July eighth, was the seventeenth Annual Pleasantville Music Festival. Uh, the seventeenth Annual Music Festival turned out to be the uh uh the one that broke the charm of rain free music festivals. Um, I will say I spent some time on Saturday uh thinking we had bad weather and then on Sunday decided maybe we dodged the worst. So some shout outs uh uh to to a bunch of people. The first, at most, uh Bruce Figler, who's the executive director of the festival, um, has done this for some years running. Uh, puts in an extraordinary amount of talent, does have time with an extraordinary amount of talent, uh, and uh uh puts up with a whole lot of things coming at him all at once in the final weeks and and months towards uh running this thing, which is uh a huge and complex machine. Uh, thank you, Bruce Figler, and thank you to your entire team. I won't list them all, but he has five or six department heads who are also extraordinary contributors to this and who think about this all year long. And in the last couple of months, the press to the finish are literally working on it in some way or another, seven days a week. So um second shout out, it was the Eric Morrissey, Alyssa Hoxton, and uh and and the other folks uh uh on the third floor, and it's it's uh way too much to ask of you. And uh you do it every year and you do it with with uh great talent, good spirit. And uh uh I fear that it adds a little gray hair to all of us. Uh, but um uh, you your your work is is noticed and appreciated.
Um, they handled the clearing of the field during the rain and then bringing people back in so smoothly. Uh, it was very impressive.
So then a a shout out to our Parks Department, um, Mike Newman, Mario Sansoda, uh, and the rest of the team, and to our D P W crew, uh, led by Anthony Carr and and Mike Ferguson, the foreman, and and that whole crew. Um, every single year, and this one is no exception. I have one person after another uh who have never uh been involved with the village before coming here as a vendor, as a performer, as a whatever, and say, I got these, these people are great. They are, they're just so on the ball, helping so many ways, putting up with all kinds of struggles to to make things happen. Uh, so it's one of those moments that makes you proud to come from the Pleasantville, New York, where a lot of people uh have a grim view of government, uh, and you cannot be at the Pleasantville Music Festival uh and uh misunderstand that we've got a great bunch of dedicated uh people working here. And then lastly, a big shout out to the, I don't know, three hundred volunteers, something like that. Uh, some of them there literally all day, twelve, fifteen, eighteen hours, some of them just signing on uh for a two hour shift, uh, helping in every way, making this engine run. This thing could not possibly happen uh without that kind of horsepower and without that many people. Carolyn Beal uh manages the whole volunteer process. She has for a long time, and somehow or another has somebody in the right place all day long. It's just an extraordinary venture. So I've said in the past, I will say again, it is way too big for us to do, and it's way too good not to do it. Uh, it's a struggle in all kinds of ways, and there are moments when the rope is stretched pretty taut. But there were also some moments uh yes, uh on Saturday that uh remind us why we do it, uh, including some really fabulous moments when audience members were uh really completely wrapped up in a musical presentation they were seeing. And even more satisfying to me, the performers themselves wrapped up in that moment, too. Uh, so many times I have performers come off backstage and uh, you know, you can sort of tell that they kind of arrived to Pleasantville, New York. Where's that? Uh, uh, but it's a gig, and they have arrived here and they find themselves in a setting that is very much different from a lot of the ones uh that they uh play day in, day out. And the zen of the festival, the zen of the volunteer support, the good service and care we deliver to all of those artists we're proud to have here, uh, gets repaid on the stage. Couldn't have been happier when the closing act in the Chilton Sophie B Hawkins uh finished and said, I love you, Pleasantville. So I'll take that any day of the week. So uh thanks to all of you. Uh, tough day when we had to evacuate and then everyone came back. Uh, certainly lessons learned every year. Uh, my message to the community is thank you to all of you who helped. Thank you to all of you who who uh uh came. A very big shout out to our sponsors, uh, including a special shout out to our lead presenting sponsor, Northwell Health, uh, which owns and operates the two hospitals uh right in our neck of the woods, uh Phelps in Sleepy Hollow and Northern Westchester and at Kisco. Northwell stepped in and uh when we uh were seeking a presenting sponsor and they said, absolutely, we're in. So Northwell Health, uh, a big thank you to all of you. Um, there'll be a postmortem. We'll have to sort out all that happened and all that might happen. Uh, it's clear that it's harder and harder and harder to do this in a world where talent costs more, everything costs more, but on July tenth, I'm happy to say July eighth, uh, felt pretty darn good. At least in the end, we had a few moments. Anybody want to add anything to that one?
Well, to to your comment about uh the success of clearing the field and bringing everyone back, I I agree. Uh, it it did work extremely well. And I think that our surrounding businesses were quite pleased, actually, with that, because several thousand people were sent out and needed to go somewhere. And so that was a, uh, I I thought a really wonderful side benefit for all of our business owners on a Saturday afternoon in the rain, when people needed somewhere to go and whatever, buy some, buy a bite to eat or just whatever.
We had a lot of positive feedback. Everyone did very well.
Yes.
Yeah, all around, even all the way up to Wheeler.
Totally, yeah.
Kind of one place would get full, people would just expand. So it just
That that's what I noticed.
Worked out really great.
Yeah.
There ought to be some silver lining to what was literally a dark cloud for a while.
Yeah. But it's, uh, you know, it's a day where the 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 village must more than double in size. You know, for for those hours of the day with the with the normal Saturday, farmer's market plus the music fest for all of that day, we're we're handling uh handling quite a few people and doing it very well. So all the preparation that the Police Department and Parks and Rec and D P W have done for the last seventeen years in the event of thunder and lightning. They did it. You all did it.
Right. You you remind me, I I I forgot to mention Chief Gressner and Lieutenant Gil Martin and Jesse Wolman. Uh, I actually should have announced them in my earlier comments. Um, we had a whole crew of of Pleasantville Police Officers, but also a whole crew of Westchester sheriffs who come and assist us without charge. Um, and uh uh, it was certainly helpful to have them. County Police uh came and supported us uh and brought their uh mobile command unit, uh, which blessedly uh we didn't need, but I might have there just in case. Uh, so uh it's it's a big to do, but uh it's uh delivered to the world by a community with a whole lot of talent and a very big heart, so. All right. Uh, a couple of other things I I wanted uh to mention. Um, one is uh the county uh as as part of the uh various police improvement initiatives that all of us have undertaken, um, uh, that arose uh several years ago through the uh various community groups, starting uh to to develop better communication and better means of dealing with matters that come to the police, but which are not always uh really police matters. Gave rise on the county side to the to the uh creation of a a project that the county calls Project Alliance, uh, which is a a community mental health uh effort, and it has five parts. Now, the first is is diversion of nine one one calls to qualified mental health professionals in a circumstance where something isn't a a crime. It's a crisis relating to somebody's mental health. Um, an enhanced behavioral health hotline, uh, including uh connections to crisis and suicide prevention lines that are now available twenty four seven. Enhanced training for E M S uh personnel where uh adult mental health first aid training is being provided to police, fire, E M S and and local military reserves. And then, uh, lastly, crisis intervention team development with fundamentals of crisis intervention for multiple jurisdictions being trained throughout Westchester. That is a module now included in all for all new police recruits at the Westchester uh uh County Police Academy. And then lastly, uh, and 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 very importantly, a mobile crisis response team. Um, the the county is contracted with five mental health providers to create a partnership with local police departments and county government. There are five different teams, uh, and they're each responsible for covering a dedicated catchment area and are able to provide mutual aid when needed. So, you know, obviously, um, it's an imperfect system, but a dramatically better one than we once had uh before. And the numbers are quite impressive. For example, uh thus far in twenty twenty three, the mobile crisis response team that I just referred to has um responded to almost fifteen hundred calls. And um uh there have been uh thousands of calls to the crisis hotlines that have been directed to mental health folks. And uh so good stuff going on on that front, and I just wanted to remind folks that uh that he remains one of the pieces that continues to um benefit all of us out of the police initiatives that took place a couple of years ago. So I mentioned once before, but I will mention again that our our local author, uh, Michael English has written a book called Woods and Water, uh, which is a uh uh described as as a a a meticulously researched and enchantingly illustrated book, illustrations by Gigi Kopelek. Uh, also a uh, a nearby resident and former president of P C T V. The book is called Woods and Water, Walking New York's Nanahagan Brook. You can buy that book at the bookstore. You can also buy it at the Black Cow, possibly elsewhere. Uh, please buy it, please read it. Really a great and interesting thing that connects to the natural world uh here in Pleasantville, New York, along Nanahagan Brook up into the woods.
Kind of podcast episode on it.
Do you? Is it out?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Send you the link.
You want to shout out?
So, well.
Shapful, shapful.
Oh, my podcast's called In the Weeds, and uh it's about the relationship between culture and the natural, human culture and the natural world. Um, and I thought that Michael's book, I mean, I I know Michael, I worked with him. I thought it would be interesting in part because if we have this little piece of wilderness in Pleasantville, but most people don't. In part because if we have this little piece of wilderness in Pleasantville that most people don't know about that is traversed by coyotes, bobcats, bears go through there. Um, and it's just tucked away behind where the pond is in Nanahagan Park and it's exists in part thanks to the aqueduct and the power lines that go through there, which make it impossible for any development. Um, and so his book is kind of an interesting meditation on what it means to have a piece of wilderness, which of course is not um not influenced by human, human activity, right? I mean, everywhere we go, there are many signs of human activity and yet at the same time, it has this very interesting history that goes back to New York history and is kind of hopeful in the sense that these species, for instance, the beaver that inhabited that brook for a little while. Um, you know, were eradicated and and now are starting to come back. And so, yeah, so I I had fun. We walked around the area together and I I interviewed him on site and um talked about it.
All right, so get the book, listen to the podcast, take the walk.
Yes. Do a tick check after the.
Oh, my God, did you read that article that I think it was in the Times last week about the fact that uh uh static electricity sucks ticks onto you?
What?
My brain fills up with more useless programming.
All right, then the last thing I wanted to uh uh mention is um that the Jacob Burns Film Center has a series that they call Community Matters Now More Than Ever. Uh, it's a a a sponsored uh series and uh as part of that, on Thursday, August third at seven P M, they're showing a movie called Odd Hours, No Pay, Cool Hat. Uh, and uh I'll read you the description they sent. Follow the inspiring journey of the most remarkable neighbors whose help you hope you never need. Volunteer firefighters as they encounter heartbreaking challenges and exhilarating triumphs to fulfill a single mission, serve their community. Heartworking, heartwarming humors and thrillingness, sweet and portrait of bravery will capture your heart and inspire. Film's going to be followed by reception in the gallery and it's an event presented in partnership with our own Pleasantville Volunteer Fire Department and the Pleasantville Ambulance Corps. So uh if you're interested in that, uh, I uh very much encourage you to sign up and uh get a ticket. Odd Hours, Cool Pay, No Hat, Thursday, August third at seven P M, followed by question and answer with the associate producer and casting director who did the movie. And then the reception upstairs in the movie. So in the Jade Pet Gallery. So Jacob Burns Film Center dot org. Uh, Thursday, August three, seven P M. Be there and uh support our first responders with what sounds like a really great evening. All right, anybody else?
I I have one que- uh, I guess question more than an announcement, but today we received a sustainable Westchester email. I don't know if you all saw that. It came to our municipal addresses about a grant.
Yes.
Grant opportunity that seems potentially relevant for our municipality and there's an information section next week, and so I just wanted to bring it up.
Yes, that one I sent you. I sent you one.
Meeting for two more weeks. Yeah.
Um.
But.
Which one is that? Because I've been getting so many different things about grants.
You need to get them all.
It came at, it came at eight thirty. Or, yeah, in my email anyway.
Oh, in the email?
Yeah, in our on our Pleasantville email. Um, and it was, it's one of, it's a request for proposals. Um, they're, you know, they're mediums that are twenty-five to a hundred thousand dollar grants for municipalities that are developing um initiatives to respond to climate change or to mitigate the effects of climate change. And there's a a pretty long list of, you know, projects that might include uh some of which are about stormwater mitigation, some of which are about about decarbonizing municipal services, green municipal services, some of which are about zoning and land use changes relating to climate. But I I was thinking, you know, we we talked about electric, potentially electrifying our police fleet or having a trial run with one. We've done that with our mower in DPW.
Right.
We've done a bunch of things that that are, you know, have have cost upfront money and are not risky, but we we put our foot out there, right? To say we're gonna give these things a shot and so far it's gone pretty well.
Yeah.
But what are those other places where you run up against? You know, I remember David, you asking about level three chargers, right? And it's like, well, that's a lot of money, you know, and they're they're maybe they're fifty thousand dollars or maybe they're even more than that. Um, but if we were serious about something like a level three charger for a police car, these are the sort of.
Where is this money coming from? I'm looking at it now.
I sent you one also about the Westchester Community Foundation.
It's the same. That's the one.
Is it the same one?
Okay, so it's a different revenue source than we normally deal with.
Um.
Yeah, we should look into that for sure.
So, yeah, since it was, the date was coming up pretty quickly, I just wanted to raise it.
It's the eighteenth. Yeah, so I can, I appreciate that. Well, you and I should talk and then we could also send it out to the climate smart group.
Sure, and we could pick, you know, I can think of at least three or four potential things that we aren't even talking about.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, E V's is a good one.
Our new media, right? Because I was thinking, let's move to work, right?
Yeah, yeah, we we have him, uh, we're at them working.
Yeah.
So I look forward to that.
Oh, you're pretty new.
Yeah, and they'll they'll be a lot of.
See, we don't need a meet. Eric's just, Eric's gonna listen. You just, you read your mind. You read our minds. Well, I I I think it's a great idea. I said, support.
Alyssa's really on top of it, too. Um, well, speaking of grants that we've gotten, um, I just have a short announcement, which is our highly popular landscape um rebate program for those who want to convert from gas to electric landscape equipment. Um, we're having another drop-off date this Saturday. So if you have a used gas-powered lawnmower, leaf blower, weed whacker that you would like to turn in and then be able to get a rebate for an electric one from nine A M to twelve P M at the recycling center. Stop by, drop it off, we'll get your information and tell you how to email your receipt into the village. Alyssa, since she processes all these, can tell you that it's, we've had a lot of takers.
All right, any further announcements? All right, uh, let me also say that we have been uh discussing in work session uh at each meeting the current moratorium on on construction in the downtown, uh which expires at the end of July. Uh, and we continue to talk about it and I would say our our current view is that we will allow it to expire at the end of July. But we remain in conversation about uh whether there are adjustments we might make to the zoning. Uh, and and certainly I think are already collectively of the view that there are uh some items we want to address in the coming months that may affect our zoning code that are likely uh will take a while to explore, but which don't have uh any immediate effect on the projects that are currently on the board. So. Further comment to the community is always welcome. Uh, our planning commission is expected to give us back some further comment after I visited them a couple of weeks ago. Um, uh, so uh stay tuned for that conversation. All right, we did two fifty-one, resolution two fifty-two, Nicole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of the regular meeting held on June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, and it's attached.
Is there a second?
Okay.
So uh, that just gives me an opportunity to shout out once again to the eight Girl Scouts we honored at our last meeting. Uh, two of them were gold award recipients, current eighth graders at Pleasantville High School, Eleanor Dundas and Rose Collins. And silver award recipients, current ninth graders, Annie Faithine, Camilla Brown, Maya Forte, Abigail King, Sarah Eggbob, Eggbob and Elizabeth Dean. So uh eight young women uh uh who achieved a uh high milestone in the world of Girl Scouting. We were pleased and privileged to uh honor them for their success. Any comments or questions, corrections on the minutes? All in favor?
Hi.
I am motion approved two fifty-three, David.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for fiscal year ending twenty twenty-three is listed below. From the general fund, seven hundred fourteen dollars from V H outside service to V H repairs. Five thousand three hundred eighty-five dollars from snow salt to sanitary sewer outside service. Uh, for a total of six thousand ninety-nine dollars. Um, from the water fund, twenty-one thousand seven hundred and ninety-six dollars from water plant variable to supply repairs.
Is there a second?
Second.
The slow snow season has given us a budget to move some money around.
Right.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
All right.
Motion approved two fifty-four, Michael.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for fiscal year twenty twenty-four is listed below. The general fund, uh, the amount of ten thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars from the account village hall repairs to the account village hall equipment. Um, in the amount of twenty-four thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars from the account contingency to the account engineering contractual. For a total of thirty-five thousand six hundred and fifty dollars from the general fund. And from the water fund, a total of ten thousand dollars from the account contingency to the account supply repairs.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions?
I just have a couple of things on this. Um, number one, that uh village hall repair to equipment, we're replacing the sliding glass door to the police station on Bedford Road. Um, we had budgeted under repairs, but it's for accounting purposes, best to be equipped.
It's broken.
It's it malfunctions and it's past its useful age. Best to get on top of that.
Yes.
It breaks down. And then that contingency is the traffic analysis for Bedford Road.
Hmm.
Um, it kind of hugged two fiscal years, so we set some money aside last fiscal year and moved it over to this fiscal year, and that's why we're calling it from contingency. So.
And that project is well along.
But it is, yeah, there there uh we have a status call with them uh next week.
And for those who may not be aware, who might be watching now or in the future, um, it's a uh an effort to really analyze the traffic and dynamics uh through the traffic lights all along Bedford Road with the goal of synchronizing them for maximum throughput. All right, all in favor of two fifty-four?
I am motion approved.
On that point, Peter, is the Wheeler, just one more time about it, is that the Wheeler um light seems to be have been changed after many, many complaints?
So.
It it seemed longer.
It 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 depends when you get there, right?
Okay.
Is that?
It has not been tough.
Right.
Really? Yeah.
Yeah, it it is. It must be on some kind of a clock. We'll we'll get all the details soon, but like painfully Saturday at eleven A M. It's switches so fast you can't get through.
Okay.
And uh so by the way, I'm glad to hear at least some moments.
Sometimes in the day.
Yeah, I've had the same experience.
Yeah, I thought I thought your advocacy had finally got to someone.
I only wish. Um, two fifty-five, uh, Paul.
The Board of Trustees, resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated July tenth, two thousand twenty-three for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. Covering check numbers one oh seven nine five one through one oh seven nine six two. General fund thirty-six thousand eight hundred forty-three and forty-four cents. Water fund twenty-five thousand four dollars. Refugees fund one thousand seventy-five for a total of sixty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-two and forty-four cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
So again, this is for the fiscal year that just ended at the end of May. Uh, paying for items that uh are ascribed to that year. I only wish that uh the the next one looked the same, but painfully, the current fiscal year is more. All in favor? I motion approved two fifty-six, Nicole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated July tenth, twenty twenty-three for fiscal year ending in twenty twenty-four. Covering check numbers one zero seven seven nine nine to one zero seven nine five zero. From the general fund, one hundred and eighty-two thousand three hundred and ninety-three dollars and forty cents. From the special fund, three hundred dollars. From the water fund, nine thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-seven cents. From the refuse fund, three thousand five hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-four cents for a total of a hundred and ninety-six thousand two hundred and two dollars and ninety-one cents. Payment of claims is attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions about payment of claim? All in favor?
Hi.
I motion approved. David, two fifty-seven.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from Karen Duke, thirty-two Saratoga Avenue, to hold block party in September twenty-third twenty twenty-three and thereby close Saratoga Avenue from Columbus Avenue to the intersection Daniel Place and from Garrigan Avenue from Madison Avenue to Saratoga Avenue from eleven A M to ten P M.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a good time. All in favor?
Hi.
Motion approved. Two fifty-eight, Michael.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the hourly rate increase for Raymond Domena court attendance from twenty-one dollars to twenty-four dollars effective June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Okay.
It's a budgeted increase?
Yes, yeah, he's uh been on tenure, does a lot of administrative work in support of the court.
Great. All in favor?
Hi.
I motion approved two fifty-nine, Paul.
Resolve that the Village Board of Trustees hereby accepts a donation to four flower planters to be placed in the village right away.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Second. So this uh reflects Techfall Development, which is developing the seventy memorial project to uh offer us uh flower planters that uh match those that they have already placed on the sidewalk in front of the building, which shout out to them are irrigated from inside the building underneath the planters. Pretty amazing. All in favor?
Hi.
I thank you, Techfall, two sixteen, Nicole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorize the appointment of Nick uh Vecarello, Ivan Kane and Steve uh Andrekak to the Pleasantville Parks and Recreation Advisory Board effective July eleventh, twenty twenty-three for a term of three years to expire April, twenty twenty-six.
Is there a second? All right. Thank you, Nick, Ivan, Steve Andresek. Uh, uh, very, very much appreciate your willingness to serve and it's a great range of background, experience, ages.
Yeah.
A really nice addition to our Parks and Rec Advisory Board. All in favor?
Hi.
I motion approved two sixty-one, David.
Whereas the property located at four seventy-four Bedford Road, Pleasantville, New York, the property requires removal of asbestos siding from a sod at the property and whereas section one twenty-three dash five dot C of the Village of Pleasantville Village Village Code includes the following restriction on making reasonably loud noise to operate or use any tools, pile driver, pneumatic hammer, tractor, dirt, electrical hoist, gasoline or electric powered saw or any other mechanical apparatus or equipment, the use of which is intended by noise between the hours of seven P M and eight A M the following day or at any time on Sunday and whereas existing siding at the property is comprised of asbestos, which must be abated and removed before the repair and replacement of the existing siding can proceed and whereas given the location of the property in order to protect public health and safety, the owner of the property has requested that it be allowed to perform the asbestos abatement removal on Sunday, July thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. In order to perform the asbestos uh abatement safety safely without danger to the public or disruption to business activities in the vicinity, now therefore be resolved, the Village Board of Trustees hereby finds that in order to protect the public health and safety, the owner of the property and its contractors shall be permitted to proceed with the asbestos abatement on Sunday, July thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, notwithstanding the restrictions included in the section one twenty-three dash five dash C. Be it for the result, the exemption from section one twenty-three dash five dot C shall be limited to work needed for the removal of of asbestos from the property on Sunday, July thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Any other work relating to repair or replacement of the siding or associated construction activities shall occur within the hours set forth in section one twenty-three dash five dot C.
Is there a second?
I get second.
Pretty self-explanatory, the uh property is across the street from the area of Foley's.
Um, actually, this is uh for uh you know, the that that actually the address is for um Frank and Jones, so.
So it's not Bedford Road.
Um, so the address there would be.
I thought this was for his Bedford Road property.
No, this is for uh seventy-six Wheeler Avenue.
Where there's already a scaffold up.
Correct, and um you know what he it is four seventy-four. I I'll confirm, let's keep this.
I I thought it was four seventy-four Bedford.
It is four seventy-four Bedford. You you may have to do it um. It is four seventy-four Bedford. You you may have to do it um eventually at at um Frank and Jones, but it's four seventy-four.
Correct, so we are correct, four seventy-four Bedford, which is on Bedford Road across the street from Foley's sort of in that round of buildings there mentioned. Obviously, we don't normally provide an exemption, but in this case asbestos abatement uh best to do it on Sunday when they can uh set up properly and and the work doesn't get in the way of everybody else. All in favor?
I.
I motion approved. All right, that's the last of our regular agenda items. Any further?
Can motion, we return to work session briefly?
You can.
And I do have a uh I do have an update uh on our paving. Uh, we are uh Anthony uh Superintendent Public Works met with E L Q, who's our paving contractor. Uh, they're looking, push the schedule up was set at at least in late August. Um, but they're uh looking to do this uh repaving from July nineteenth through July twenty-eight. Um, uh so Anthony would prefer that that occur or so. Uh, so it's Academy Street, Brookfield Place, Cooley, Grove, Hopper, um Hopper Street Parking Lot, uh Marble Avenue, uh where putting rumble strips, uh Orchard Street and Sutton Place. So this is one of our most aggressive uh paving schedules uh we've undertaken in the in almost a decade, so. Um, just to put that out there, we'll obviously do notices once um that's been nailed down with the contractor.
Why Cooley? It's not ready or the the other side of Cooley?
Yeah, sorry.
Which does very much need it.
Yeah, and uh all all homeowners on these streets will get letters from the Department of Public Works. Um, it'll be closed to uh through traffic, but local traffic, people who live in the homes and have access. Uh, so weather permitting, think about a week and a half to achieve this.
All right, so that's good news and then you know, quick.
Either development or updates on um the drainage in Memorial Plaza or
Yes.
Other other things that we have going on.
Sure.
Uh, I think in the median and all that kind of stuff.
Yep, so the irrigation was uh installed in the median. Now Parks will shift gears from the user test uh to to there. Um, the drainage work of Memorial Plaza is planned um and being coordinated. Um, we finalized construction documents for the civic space area, the temporary space, um and we are just mailing down the dating schedule on that. Um, Vanville Road, we're still coordinating for the signal.
Yeah.
Um. And talking to the O T on that, so we're hoping to restart working off the August timeframe, which means the plaza uh most likely will be done, plaza area most likely will be done early spring of next year. Yeah.
It's a lot better with the straight uh bump outs and the walking crosses with the the painting.
Yeah.
Exactly.
All right, yeah, it's a big improvement.
Yeah, um, so that's all, that's all progressing. Um. Another F Y I, we're most likely going to have to do some emergency utility work in front of Jacob Burns to replace a valve, it'll water valves, that'll be uh tomorrow night and Wednesday night, so um you know, that that will set out a notice, all that work will take place ten P M and after. Um, so what going on?
Shut down of water in the neighborhood?
No, that uh one building would be impacted, the Remax, that's it.
And that's mostly just like they're closed pretty early.
Yes.
Right, so I wouldn't impact them.
No, not yet. Again, it'll be ten ten P M probably to one A M.
There's residential up there uh upstairs, they'll be affected for a brief period, but.
We may get questions, why are they giving work in the middle of Vanville Road in the middle of the night? Um, but it's an emergency.
Well, I'd go to get it done before usually these things happen a millisecond after the repaving is done.
Right, exactly, that's what we were.
Mm hmm.
We're not up down Con Ed.
Yeah. Con Ed, they should be finishing up on their service line replacements, uh and then we're waiting for their uh re-haven step. So nothing solid, other than they're finishing up the last of the service.
You think that just obviously we don't know, but you think it'd be done for September?
I think uh I think likely it would be done in September.
In September?
Yeah. Um, but we will. Probably.
Was there you know, the issue about bathing suits that David raised?
So I wanted to talk about that.
Oh, that's in work session, okay.
All right, so uh is there a motion to adjourn or return to work session?
Yes, it's on the second.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
All right, uh we'll return to work session uh the end of our regular meeting. Uh, again, a shout out to Gabriel Salome, uh the newest member of the Pleasantville Police Department. Uh, we are delighted to have you on the team. Thank you and good night. See you in two weeks. Feel free to stay on for our work session if you are so inclined.
No, I I was testing mine.
Okay.
I'll just leave the word there.
So there's two things that I thought we could briefly discuss. One was so last year, if you call, we decided to make some money available
Yeah.
For um scholarships for Panther Club.
Mm hmm.
And the problem was, we did that after the notices had gone out and people had started to sign up. And then there was this huge waitlist and we went through all the machinations to expand availability, so I don't think we used any of those scholarships as it turned out, right?
Well, yeah, we sent out a um an email uh to the families asking if anybody was qualified for the SNAP lunch program. They were interested in.
Yeah.
Um.
That went in like September or something, right?
Uh, I but I have to look back, yeah, we didn't receive any interested um any interested, any interest in that program.
Right. I think it was my fault, by the way, because I think it was not um timely, but that was because I proposed it late later than I should have.
How many people did you say revealing themselves as the scholarship for the summer?
Our team, right?
Yes.
That's great.
Yeah, and we have sixty more kids in total than we've had last year, right? It's a very big year for summer camp.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's going great, by the way. My kids are going and just also the way they've been able to handle the weather, it's very crazy. I think it's been super professional and um with the trips to the trips that the junior campers are doing, they're loving it and they're doing a great job.
Did anyone see that uh Facebook post? I'll share it with uh everyone on West Dresser Moms. Um.
Yes, that was a good post.
You saw that uh woman was at the wall.
No, it is.
So, yeah, I guess had had a a knee issue um. And Pleasantville Camp, first off, she she was just watching the Pleasantville campers and counselors and commented on how great the counselors were. And then secondarily commented on how great the kids were. They came up to her and asked if you need any help, can we help you? So it was really nice, just randomly posted, you know.
Randomly, it's it's a nice story, really nice.
Posted in another group, somewhere completely different, and then someone was aware of it and shared it in the one oh five, so no.
Wow, very nice.
This is even better, so that's good reflection on on our our camp and our um our counselors.
So I was just asking the board if we could make the same funds available this year and but then to notice them now before the signup. So that we can get and then try to create some kind of checkbox or whatever in the normal signup so they can just say, I believe I'm eligible for the SNAP, uh you know, for the.
What are you talking about Panther Club?
Panther Club, yeah.
So Panther Club is uh a lot more money for a year, right? So the question is, how much money would would we make available?
Will we, what did we do last year?
So I, last year, I think the conversation went, and it wasn't September, I think, was we were going to take the temperature of the demand
Right.
And then make a decision accordingly.
Yeah.
Because it is uh if we were to do a full year, it's about twenty-one thousand per student.
Yeah.
Um.
Is that kind of cost or?
Well, it's it's five hundred thirty dollars.
That's for five days, right?
For five days.
Right, but it it's not twenty-one thousand.
Well.
In total, it's that's five hundred thirty a month, right?
Right, I'm sorry, five five thirty a month, I'm sorry. It's fifty-three hundred.
Right.
Right, um, and you know, we had fourteen, that's about seventy-four thousand dollars.
Yeah, so we need to find out what the demand is and then we can have a discussion about.
So if the board is interested, we could take the same verbiage we did last year, send it out to the uh Panther Club community and see what type of demand is.
Yeah, and I the other possibility there is that the scholarship might be partial and not in not the hopes.
That's what we discussed, I think, the first time.
Okay, sure, yes.
Um, and then the second thing you can.
Well, yeah, so um I wasn't aware of this because I don't have kids in summer camp, but David had raised the issue about girls and bathing suits and we were wondering.
Something we talked about last year.
If there had been any follow through with that, and just full warning, if Mike isn't willing to make a change, there are a bunch of thirteen-year-old girls.
No, I I I although it's not reflected in the campbook, what they tell them is that that is not, you know, they're they're not um enforcing that rule.
And what is the rule?
Why is it a rule?
I think we need to get it out of the handbook.
Yeah, I think we should.
I don't think they need to reprint the handbook, but if it's online, let's take it out.
What does the handbook say?
The girls have to wear one-piece bathing suits.
And they want to wear two-piece?
They want to be able to wear, we're talking about little girls.
Uh huh.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Yeah.
A lot of them like going to the bathroom is much harder.
Yes.
My daughter's first question was, are the boys required to wear a shirt?
Why?
Well, because of too good inputs to them, yeah.
Yeah.
There's nothing inherently different about our.
I mean, why do we care?
I mean, other than size.
Right, I mean, we're not talking about an age group where you know, people are going to be wearing Brazilian bombs or something.
Well, and even if they were going to, they could do that with a one-piece.
Didn't see that coming.
You never know.
It's explaining quickly.
No, like one-piece, I mean, I mean awful, I mean, pretty revealing too.
I was gonna say, I mean, so let's get it out of hand.
Yeah, that's fine, I'll talk to Mike. I spoke, I spoke to Mike about it, but it's air. David shared an article about it and said, listen, we're not enforcing the one-piece mandate, um but yes, we'll take it out of the handle if it's online and, you know, make sure moving forward.
Very, very clear.
Thank you.
No problem.
Um, can can we quickly go back to the moratorium issue without?
Sure.
So, um am I correct that the main issue that we have to resolve before the end of the month is whether we're gonna um get rid of these bonuses for the F A R? Is there anything else that we're considering?
I think that is the main issue, right? I I I don't think any of the five of us are of the mind that we should radically restrict residential development.
Correct.
Uh, and really the question is, do we want to twist the valve a a bit? And that's one of the ways to do it.
So should we talk about that a little bit? Because I felt like that was, in a way, the main thing we needed to talk about and then.
I think it is, yes.
So I guess you said that, you know, with the particular example of according to Bedford Road, we're looking at a reduction of about twenty percent of units. Um. I I have a couple of concerns about that. One is, you know, how difficult does that make that make it for them to develop that property? Um, but then, on the one hand, I under the understand the desire to kind of you know, cool things a little bit. Um, but on the other hand, one of the things that we've talked about a lot is affordability and based on my reading, you know, the the more roadblocks you put in the way of density, particularly in the downtown, that's really going against the goal of affordability, so. I'm sure there are probably other reasons why maybe we should consider this, but those are my two questions, I guess, and I wonder if you guys have thoughts about that and um, really how the rest of you feel about the bonuses.
It's sort of strongly not about the bonuses themselves, but about implementing them in this way.
Mm hmm.
Because the reason I, you know, aside from any individual's reason out there in the village, the reason we did this
Mm hmm.
was because there was a legitimate question asked about whether our infrastructure could support forces that earlier board set into motion with um, you know, with a master plan.
Mm hmm.
Um, and specifically traffic, uh electricity, uh emergency response, water, et cetera, et cetera.
Mm hmm.
Um, and we answered all those questions and 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 as Peter said, it was pretty, you know, unequivocal that yes, absolutely could.
Mm hmm.
Um, and so there may be a larger question as to that we can look at that I think will take longer to answer, honestly, about is this now going to become the kind of development that we want? And to be fair to Jonathan Cunningham, it probably will take longer for us to know that.
Mm hmm.
But I don't think in any sense is it fair to four forty-four Bedford Road or any other person who is going to be developing for us to sort of say, we want to make the people who are upset about seeing new faces in the village or just seeing too much construction in the village feel more comfortable and therefore we're going to change the ability of developers to use this set of rules that we've had in place for a while. Um, and and I'm not saying like Peter's idea of putting some of these um requirements into the base code may make sense. But I feel like it it's it's addressing a problem that we need more perspective to answer and not the legitimate problem that the villagers who are concerned about development brought to us, which we did answer. So so if we just said, okay, we're gonna cut twenty percent off this unit, I don't like if we court, I don't know how we would how we would say that we came to that decision, like what what is the the basis?
Well, I don't, I mean, I think I think we're allowed to to make
We absolutely are.
Changes, right? Like, I I think it's a question, it's more a question of whether, you know, that's what we've decided is the right thing to do for the village.
Right, but I'm saying like we would be essentially doing it because we feel like there's too much going on.
So, I mean, what I I I I think you've accurately described uh a lot of it, wh- what I sort of unpacked what's come at us in November and to me since is that all of those issues, what about police, what about fire, what about water, what about traffic? Are are i- in a way that the objective pieces that people uh bring out in an argument that is essentially underlying I'm worried that the place is changing and won't be the place that I have always known and and wanted to be.
Mm hmm.
And I think it is changing in lots of ways. I mean, I've lived here thirty-seven years and it has changed in all kinds of ways, some of which I I wish could be dialed back, a lot of which I'm I'm glad about. Uh, and you know, ki- kind of the the position I think we're in is to be, it it is is that murky place, part art, part science about how do you sustain the best parts of Pleasantville in a changing world? You know, I certainly would say, look, this is a changing world for four forty-four Bedford Road. It is a changing world for the property at Seventy Memorial. Uh. And despite the fact that in either of those two locations, some might like and some might not like what was proposed. It's our job to say, well, something has to happen, right?
Well, it's a, for sure.
So I I guess that my only, and I'm not taking a vision on it, I was gonna say I don't think that the analysis we've gone through, which has, I think, effectively laid to rest those objective concerns were now what I see as kind of the umbrella concern that 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 arose out of them. Or the day was from.
Cause could we add, it's everything you listed, David, about the concerns that people raised, just to add the aesthetic concern, because that's that's one that's very slippery.
Yeah.
But it's come up constantly.
Of course.
And so.
Unfortunately, you know, often in um often in people with diametrous, diametrically posed views of what would be preferable.
Absolutely, and and I'm not convinced that architectural design guidelines can be written that are
Yeah.
implementable by di- by different groups of people, you know, without ultimately, people are gonna be interpreting adjectives.
Yeah.
Right, they're gonna be interpreting adjectives in different ways.
Yeah.
Just as we do now, and we say, oh, I want I wanted to go with what's around it, or I wanted to have an old-fashioned look, or wanted to have a modern look.
Yeah.
We have all these kinds of um kinds of things that can't really be defined. All that is to say that the proposal of eliminating F A R bonus on meeting design guidelines is a response to that constituency.
For sure, but that's and that's all I'm saying is like, I think if we do anything now, all we're doing is response to a constituency.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
And I'm not saying that that changing the F A R guard guidelines aren't necessarily are necessarily a good or bad idea. What I'm saying is that, like, I really like your thoughts about the skyline, right? I'm intrigued by what we heard today about upper stories and particularly, you know, and I'm intrigued by what we heard today about upper stories and particularly, you know, and I think we should be looking at things like green roofs, et cetera. Um, and all of that feels like thinking more holistically about the master plan as it exists.
Mm hmm.
And it really does. The part where I take Jonathan Cunningham's point is, I don't think we know yet. Like, in, but I didn't study economics for a long time, but when I studied it, the thing that that really struck me is when people were talking about macroeconomics, they would say the problem of macroeconomic is that you have. So few controls over the economy, and when you exercise a control, you almost never know what the eventual result is going to be. And if you start changing things too quickly, then the 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 implications can reverberate in ways that are not positive. Right?
Mm hmm.
Um, and I'm and and you said tonight, Peter, you know, like this is a lot of stuff that's happening now is done twenty years ago. So my my temptation, my desire to be like resist the political pressure, take. Take a a real stretch of time to look at this seriously and look at, well, could we get more affordable housing by doing this instead of that? Could we protect the skyline by doing this instead of that? You know, like, what are other communities doing that's been successful and unsuccessful? We haven't seen too many case studies yet because we've been asking our planners narrow questions based on. The concerns that were brought to us. That's my thought.
What about, so when we're talking about this, getting rid of the bonuses, let's talk specifically about four 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 Bedford. Um, Peter, you looked into this. Do you think that if we did this, it would. Present some serious challenges for them in terms of being able to follow through with this project? I feel like that's pretty concrete.
Um. I can't assess the economics of that. Uh, um. Clearly, something can be done at at any level. Um, I I don't really know the answer to what it's costing them and who's involved and. What financing is involved in all of that.
Yeah.
You know, what what is clear, which is the the grim reality of the world in which we currently live, is that. There is some subsidy money out there for low income housing. And there is very little subsidy out there for middle income housing.
Mm hmm.
And now we're in a circumstance where, you know, projects that are eighty percent of the average median income are, you know, producing. You know, families of four hundred and some thousand dollars is is eighty percent of the average median income. So, you know, numbers that just don't make sense for a whole lot of people. So what where I was going with that is all of these ideas. You know, you need windows in every room, green roofs, setbacks, terraces, uh, reduced building density. All of those things make it more expensive to build.
But reducing the parking permits could make it less expensive.
Absolutely, uh, uh, but the question there is whether what you achieve there. So. You know, I think what's fair to say at the moment is, uh, our parking requirements for the apartment that have been built. Maybe are they've been fine. Are they are they easily reduced? I I don't know the answer to that. I mean, I will say, just for example, we have an issue that's arisen about visitor parking for the act. And concern about parking on the street and how people can handle that. So, you know, the whole question of parking is such a.
Confuse, right?
And and uncertain with pandemic changes, with commuting changes, with with uh. The imagined notion of autonomous cars, um, that presumably going to happen sometime, maybe not as fast as some people thought, but it's gonna happen, right?
So there's there's the one thing about some of these things is there actually are municipalities on the other side of the country who are experimenting with them. So there may be data that we could work on.
Mm hmm. Let's let's go back to this. I'm gonna try and really.
It's almost the sheepdog of it.
It's like, oh, we almost left at nine.
Um, to this question of the F A R bonuses, because I mean, I'm interested in all that other stuff too, but we're not gonna decide that before the end of the month, right? So, um, so it sounds like we don't know if that would make it difficult for these guys to to um.
Maybe we change their project. It's it's reducing the profitability in their project, and I just would say to anybody who wants to vote for that. Like, why? Are you voting because we basically don't want five extra families in town?
I'm also deeply uncomfortable with all the discussion of this based on one project.
Yeah.
You know, and and that we don't have another one. We don't have another one we're talking about.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, people have brought up things that might happen on certain corners, on certain stop sites. But also nothing could happen for twenty years, just like nothing happened at the Q Street. That could have happened, right? For how long? Forever?
Well, not for, I mean, it had more potential after twenty seventeen, but it could have been residential. This changed twenty years before that.
Residential for all those years, and it 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 wasn't until it became extremely desirable all of a sudden to live an hour from the city.
And this change, should we make it, would have happened after the project was proposed, after it was brought to the planning board?
Mm hmm.
So it's clearly within our power to look at something and says, oh, this is gonna make. A substantial change in the village.
Mm hmm.
And let's change something to let that not happen. So what Jonathan was saying was not factually true. Because we know from the experience of four forty three Bedford Road being sort of the straw that broke camel's back.
Mm hmm.
That we can, in fact, put in a moratorium, look at the changes that are going to be caused by, uh, you know. Happening and then make a decision that will affect the project that's already uh either before us or about to be before us that we're aware of, right?
Yeah, I mean, for me, I just, I mean, I understand the anxiety about too much too soon, and part of what's difficult about is that. Is that we don't know what the future holds, right? Like, we know that there's a housing shortage in New York, right? We know that there's.
Just I add to that, that I think it is near certain that there will be increasing legislative pressure on us to develop more housing in the coming years.
Right, and taking those factors into consideration, I mean, what I would have said if I had time, you know, when Jonathan was asking us what our sort of vision is. I would say that knowing that there's a need for housing and knowing that there's a need for more affordable. Not necessarily, I mean, low income as well, but more affordable housing. I would prefer to have more of that housing density be in the downtown than in the more outlined regions personally. Like, I would, you know, I I like the the structure of our town such that it exists, which is a denser downtown with an actual functioning downtown. And then it gets more sparse as you move out, right? And so I think, and honestly, this particular F A R bonus thing, like, I I still feel like I don't understand it well enough. But um, uh, but I I guess I I um hesitate to make a decision that will. Is designed solely to reduce the density and make it more difficult to develop downtown when we know that those pressures exist. And um. Does that, am I making sense?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, yeah.
I I think.
But I but I'm, you know, I don't know, I I would be happily hear the counterargument if if one of you feels, I mean, I guess. You know, there's the counterargument that this would, if we did do this, people would feel like. People from that contingency would feel like we did something to slow down development, but is there any other counterargument that anybody has of why we should? Reduce the bonuses?
I mean, I think. For all of this, one piece of it is okay. A significant number of people. Certainly a vocally significant number of people.
Mm hmm.
Uh, have essentially said, we feel like it's too much too fast, right? That that's kind of the overarching thing.
Sure.
And it isn't unreasonable to say that. Because it's e- easy to understand why people would feel that way.
Mm hmm.
And I I would say, you know, given the perspective that we have sitting here with the responsibilities we have. We have a better sense than the average person about the dynamics of demand, about. The limitations of zoning, about the economics of making things happen, about the pressures we're gonna get from the county and the state, about affordable housing. About the social goals we have, about the, you know, inexorable margin values that is. Creating a much glossier community than we had a generation ago.
Mm hmm.
Um, so all all of those things come into play.
Exactly.
Right, uh, um, and 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 yet the anxiety that. That some of this generates in people's minds is real and it's not dishonest, right? It's.
No, absolutely.
Absolutely, and I think one thing the moratorium allowed or the town hall, even moratorium. Allowed was much greater transparency about all of the issues at play, right? When when the when people feel like the pace of change and the transparency of change are obscure to them. Then that leads that leads the kind of unrest that we felt, right? It's 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 too much too fast, plus why didn't I know about it?
Yeah.
But that's another key piece.
Yeah.
To this.
Mm hmm.
Where whereas, of course, people who are subscribing into all the emails and. Obviously, no one comes to meetings, but people who are reading the examiner or whatever, they do know, right? And they kind of sense things are coming. But the vast majority of people are not doing those things. They're going to work, they're raising their kids, they're helping their grandmother, you know. At home, like whatever that whatever people are doing. So so that I think there's been a lot of good public um engagement that has come out of this.
Yeah.
Not only formally, but mostly informally through through all of the all of the uh. Elected officials in government and leaders and volunteers in government who have been able to talk to so many different people. And, you know, I think they, I think even people who were very upset have. Uh, that I have talked to have learned a bit about which levers the government can and shouldn't pull.
Mm hmm.
Right? And what is what is our, what are the limits of our power, what should be limits of our power? Because when you start to frame it as a story about private property rights, that that narrative sounds different. To a lot of people when you say, imagine you're the property owner and you've had it for fifty years, and then there's COVID and a pandemic. And you lose your biggest tenant, but a lot of people want to live here. And you could all of a sudden take what was a horrible situation financially catastrophic for your family and generation, and your grandparents are mad at you because you ruined everything with this property. Oh, and now so now you have a whole new development because people want to live in your town and you can make a residential.
Yeah.
And that's your private property. It's your generational property that you, you know, not that I'm gonna serve and all this, but. When you frame it in that way, it sounds an awful lot like it isn't government's responsibility.
Well, the other thing to.
Do much about this.
I agree with everything you said. And the other thing to to remember, like, when we renovate libraries, I've seen this all around the country. There is a group of people that whatever you do are upset. Because they fundamentally don't like change, and everywhere in the country they have distinct characteristics. Um, they tend to be the longest term residents, they're mostly property owners and not renters, they're mostly white, uh. Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And a public library has the explicit mission to accommodate everyone, so it is important to accommodate them. So. What you find is when you start to design for the renovation, you design something for them. At the same time, libraries that get confused and think, oh, because I've seen more people at my library board meeting than I've ever seen before.
Hmm.
Because they're all angry and because they're all saying the same thing. They must represent the community. They never represent the majority of the community.
Mm hmm.
And I felt that here in the last few weeks, as the the fences and everything else came off of. The front of seven memorial plaza, the number of people that had talked to me about how excited they are has just sort of dramatically gone up.
Yeah. And those people are starting to come out of the woodwork.
And to piggyback on that, like, for example, today, um, the Taco Project revealed their new outdoor patio area.
Yeah.
They started it today. They have couches and they said that they've been waiting to do this until they can, until they were clear off the fence that was there, and now they have that extra space. And now you've got this other place that people can hang out. It's like they've got they've got couches and they've got.
Well, they worked they worked with pliables, I think, too.
And now they've expanded it.
And I believe Vito bought them some furniture because of the trouble he caused when.
And so like, that was today that I went and it was really nice, and they're gonna have events every Mondays, and they're excited for all the people that are gonna be coming out. So. From businesses, we're also seeing the excitement that that this is bringing. They're seeing that people are getting out here more. So which is, you know, I mean, I think I think for me that looking at the bonuses, if we were to take them away, I guess. The primary purpose why they were put into place, I think, and and the master plan in twenty seventeen was to encourage, you know, the building because. Now, could we have accomplished that? I I it's possible that that was definitely accomplished by the projects that have already happened.
Mm hmm.
So we do have that opportunity now to say, okay, you know, our our past selves in twenty seventeen had it right, but maybe now is when. We can scale it back. And that's where I'm wondering if it's, is it enough now to just remove the bonuses? Because the bonuses were as as incentivize these developers. Now we've already gotten, you know, three big projects that have happened already. So do we need to keep incentivized for people to build, or do we scale it back just having it be known? Maybe we don't need the bonuses exactly anymore.
Yeah, we did Peter's idea. Would we consider, because one thing I would consider voting positively for is consider. Taking the bonuses off, writing the requirements that the bonuses are intended to incentivize into the regular zoning code. But then maybe only having that apply as of the beginning of next year or something like that, so it doesn't affect the current project.
And you say that because you feel it's unfair to change the rules frame?
Yeah, I do, and I don't think that we have, we have a rationale. That you could say, like, okay, we tried to encourage all this development, we encourage all this development. Now, while we still want mixed use development, we're gonna take a longer time to figure out the right way. To get exactly.
So I mean, in that scenario, it's not like we would do it effective January one of next year. We would just wait till the appropriate time to.
Right.
To do it.
Um, or you could explicitly grandfather in projects that are before the that are already made their their preliminary application or something like that, right?
You 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 certainly could, yes, you could.
Because we wouldn't, if we went David's route, we wouldn't want to wait to announce it all because we want any potential.
Right, you don't want to.
Property owners to know what's coming.
Yeah, so I mean, at least so far as we know. There are no other significant residential projects in the works.
Right.
Doesn't mean it couldn't happen tomorrow, but that's that's as far as we know. Um, and, you know, as you already pointed out, uh, there are so many tripwires in the capacity to develop any of these properties. Wheeler's is very difficult. Certainly, the track side, this side of Wheeler's is nigh on to impossible.
Sure.
For anybody to do anything, which is why we've seen investment in in those buildings. Um, and on the other side of Wheeler, it's similarly unlikely that somebody could, you know. Buy the building that has the bagel store around Rhododendron all the way to the all the way to the former fish market. Tear it down and build something even they have a very narrow slice and no realistic way to get underground parking there. Right? So those are the kinds of things that cause people to say, oh, my God, oh, my God, you know, three stories everywhere. It's it's not gonna happen. I mean, as I mentioned earlier. This only got changed twenty five years ago or thereabouts, and, you know, just a handful of apartments have been built, you know?
Yes, I don't think Jonathan was scared about the seven or ten extra people who are gonna be living at four four Bedford. He was more talking about the tripwire for the future. So if we put that in place for now.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that's exactly where he is, but.
Yeah.
You know, that's a piece of it.
I'm I'm glad you brought up uh business owners, Paul, because that's, we we've talked about a lot of stakeholders, but. And and David, you brought in a lot of, oh, uh, a lot, you talked about a lot of voices we're not hearing from. I think a big a big constituency we're not hearing from are people who moved here in five years, right? Were generally just have their head down with a two year old or whatever, and like, don't have time to think about any of this, but they already voted with their feet. They moved here, knowing everything that they're looking at, right? And they chose it, and they chose not to live.
Right.
Somewhere else that looks different.
Right.
So I feel like they they kind of are in support of a lot of the, that makes sense, right?
My new neighbor.
The business owner, the small business owner is another one that all of those who have moved here in the last five years. Many of whom had no connection, and we're just looking for where is their action in Westchester? Where can I start my dream business? Where can I start my restaurant, my cheese shop, or whatever, you know? And and that's been, you know, that that's a very powerful.
We're at a different level than we were ten years ago, and I think we'll be at a. We're at a different level than we were ten years ago, and I think we'll be at another level in another year or two.
So if there are people who've, you know, who've lived here fifty years and say, feel like feel betrayed, right? Uh, which is the word that version, right? Well, there's also, you can betray your business owners too.
Who betrayed by, I mean, boy, that's a loaded word, huh? Betrayed by the board.
Yeah, maybe they feel like, yeah.
Sure.
We're all driving Lamborghinis in our country houses or something.
Well, or even just that that, whatever, we're not, we're not, we're not listening, or okay, let's say, or we don't share their values or share their business.
Well, so certainly.
All the business owners who moved here also with great at great risk financially to themselves to to start to build a dream, and we want, we want them all here. Um, so.
It's gonna be really interesting to see what it's like when seventy memorial is filled. I mean, because I I'm I'm a little behind and I need to work with you, Paul, but I really want to work on a project to work with the retail um, owners.
If you can still now, is that right?
Yeah, they are affordable or not. It's fully leased. I don't know if ever it moved in, but most of them moved in.
So and do we have any anecdotal, like, how the villagers change based on that?
I I was there for forty five minutes on a Sunday with Jonathan then. Not a single car.
I mean, the traffic at Grant Street, yeah, it's anecdotal, but
Yeah.
it's a spot.
Yeah.
And there there are things about parking.
Yeah.
The visitor park.
Trucks, you know, Amazon, that that
Okay.
contractors.
Mm hmm. These Amazon trucks, they're like pulling up on sidewalks and.
Well, that's one of the things about talking about traffic. I mean, one of the delivery vehicles are a major source of traffic.
Well, definitely, sure. Well, the other thing that I, and this is, it goes back a long way, is that uh, people are are very protective, obviously, of their own personal property rights. Further to conversation, we had about possibly expanding the air re-review into all the major thoroughfares. It doesn't feel good to be told somebody else is gonna tell you what you can do to your own house.
Mm hmm.
Now, we don't like the way it looks, you know, whatever. But uh, uh, by and large, people are 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 respectful of uh, and and protective of their own property rights. They're protective of some tenant shops. But they imagine that the owners of the property, the commercial landlords are all deep pocketed characters and that we should tighten the screws on them and that they should reduce rents and that uh we should have really very strong control. We're saying, don't like the way the we look, you look, you know, you gotta change this, you know, we're in control. So a- and and that goes to your fairness issue. It's simply not fair. And secondly, I know some of these people, some of them have done very well by owning property here for a long time and um uh, some of them not so, right? I mean, I I obviously Silverman Realty, which bought the pharmacy, big company, they have plenty of property. But this so far has been a net loss and a net loss for a couple of years, right? I I'm optimistic that they'll turn that into something positive, but that's not something the average person can do, like buy a building and take a loss on it for years.
Right.
Uh, and so, you know, all of that feeds into the idea, and some of it is the nostalgic idea. I certainly uh, you know, in some respects, wish the world could be this way, but recognize that it isn't, that you know, they want they want the world we we once had more of where where, you know, there are four shops and the middle shop is is the hardworking business owner who owns the building. Mm hmm. Right? That was the case for many years at the bakery. Um, and and now, uh, although there's some people, I'd say families still owns the building, um, uh, you know, we're now in a world where whenever a building like that becomes available, they're worth enough money that it's it's some entity that's bigger with deeper pockets that will buy it. And that's why we have this vibrance, right? And, you know, the same people who wish that wish that there was a more reasonable way for regular folk to live here are not selling their house for two hundred thousand dollars less than it's worth. Um, you know, to to make it available to someone, right? So, um, those are forces we don't have any control over. That said, we are also the stewards of the village for all of these people and um, you know, I would say, and I I I I could imagine the idea of ratcheting back the bonuses as a response to these concerns.
And would you be willing to take grandfather?
Or or? I don't know. I mean, I will say part of part of the problem at four forty four is uh folks disapprove of the way it looks. And that might be different if it looked different. And I say that, I think they have morphed it in some ways that may be responsive to comments they have received, but.
Well, the Bedford frontage, I thought, was very responsive to feedback.
I agree. I mean, in reality, it's 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 under a five story building, right? So it's.
It is under.
It's lower.
It's not the, that I am personally, you know, we could talk about setbacks. I think the setbacks would be in the four story zone and not the three.
Yeah.
You know, you look at.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Right.
And and the main thing is we don't want that building to stay empty, right?
No, we don't.
Well, I mean, that's.
It's funny, for some people, that isn't the main thing. Some people don't.
No, I know.
Well, and and the reason, right, the reason they like it is it's not generating any activity, any traffic. Like, great, you know, that that, I mean, you may have had the same thing in the conversation with people who's, oh, it'd be great if the bank built the space for a restaurant. Okay, well, you're worried about traffic.
Right.
Right.
You know, I I mean, I I will say, one of the regrets, not that it's ultimately our business, is that this proposal hacks up the bank space. So, but on on the other hand, if I'm an owner, who's gonna rent the cavernous bank space?
And if it were retrofitted to become a medical, medical dental offices, then it would have consequences over.
Yeah, I mean, that that's not so likely to happen because there there's a higher parking requirement for medical, for healthcare uses.
All right. So the plan is we're gonna mull this over a little bit more and then make the decision next time?
That's kind of where we are, right?
Okay.
Most likely to get a final memo from the planning commission. Yeah.
So.
All right.